Then it's high, high, heavy, our tombs lay. Down to our gates, down in strong arms, strong. For there hand we go. You will always know that the army goes rolling along.
The United States Marine Corps.
From the walls of Montezuma to the shores of Tripoli. We advise our country's battles on the land and on the sea. Pursue life for rights and freedom and to keep our honor clean. We are proud to claim the title of United States Marines.
United States Navy.
Anchors away, my boys. Anchors away. Farewell to college shores we sail at break of day, day, day. Through all the sky, a shore, drink to the home. Until we meet once more, this wishing you a happy voyage home.
The United States Air Force.
Off we go, Lord, who we are. And high, to the sun. Hear the call, sweet, old mother. And the voice, your guide. Down the dice, coming, take a hunter. Off the water, the road. We live in prayer, we'll have it good. Nay, nothing will stop the U.S. Air Force.
The United States Coast Guard.
In a mighty corner, God, with praise of trust in me. Through service, or a hand, I shall honor thus thee. Send them, righteousness, our God, our name and glory too. To fight, to say. To fight, and I. I will starve, we are for you.
Let's give Lake's High School Choir a hand for that wonderful job. So if you aren't seated, you may be seated. I'd now like to invite Major Munson and the Two-Two Striker Brigade up to the microphone to present the POW MIA Remembrance Table.
Sergeant Arbenda Upredy, America's First Corps and Seventh Infantry Division's Non-Commissioned Officer of the Year, will help us all remember our service members who are currently prisoners of war or missing in action, to reaffirm our commitment to account for them until the day they all come home. The table before you is a place of honor. It is set for one. This table is our way of symbolizing the fact that members of our profession of arms are missing from our midst. They are commonly called POWs or MIAs. We call them brothers and sisters. They are unable to be with us this evening, and so we remember them. This table, Set for One, is small, symbolizing the frailty of one prisoner alone against his oppressors. The tablecloth is white, symbolizing the purity of their intentions to respond to their country's call to arms. The single red rose, displayed in a vase, reminds us of the families and loved ones, of our comrades in arms who keep the faith awaiting their return. The red ribbon tied so prominently on the vase is reminiscent of the red ribbon worn upon the lapel and breasts of thousands who bear witness to their unyielding determination to demand a proper accounting for four are missing. The candle. The candle is lit, symbolizing the upward reach of their unconquerable spirit. A slice of lemon is on the bread plate to remind us of their bitter fate. There is salt upon the bread plate, symbolic of the family's tears as they wait. The glass is inverted. They cannot toast with us this night. The chair. The chair is empty. They are not here. All of you who served with them and called them comrades, who depended upon their might and aid and relied upon them, for surely they have not forsaken you. Remember, until the day they come home, remember.
Thank you. And now I'd like to invite Colonel James Veseli, commanding officer of the Two-Two Striker Brigade Combat Team, to the podium to receive proclamation. We're very fortunate here in Lakewood to have built an outstanding relationship with Colonel Veseli and his soldiers. And it's my privilege, on behalf of the City Council, to provide them with our proclamation in honor of Veterans' Day today. Whereas members of the Army, Air Force, Navy, Marines, Coast Guard, and Merchant Marine have answered a high calling to serve and have helped secure America at every turn, and whereas Americans veterans answered the call when asked to protect our nation from some of the most brutal and ruthless tyrants, terrorists, and militaries the world has ever known, and our veterans stood tall in the face of grave danger and established our nation to become the greatest force for freedom, and whereas our country is forever indebted to our veterans for their courage and exemplary service and honor those who laid down their lives in freedom's defense and made the ultimate sacrifice for our benefit, and whereas on Veterans' Day we salute the men and women who have proudly worn the uniform of the United States of America and the families who have served alongside them, and we affirm our sacred duty as citizens to express our enduring gratitude, both in words and actions, for their service. And whereas these brave men and women and their selfless sacrifices continue to inspire us today as we work to advance peace and extend freedom around the world, and whereas as many face overwhelming unknowns, through community collaborations we can ensure that those who have served their nation receive the resources they deserve, and whereas their abiding patriotism and enduring devotion to the ideals on which the United States is founded provides a source of permanent inspiration to ensure our unwavering support as a community, and whereas through their commitment to freedom, Americans veterans have positively impacted millions of lives and made our country and the world more secure, and the city of Lakewood resolves that their sacrifices will always be remembered. Now therefore, the Lakewood City Council hereby proclaims November 11th, 2018, as Veterans' Day in the month of November, 2018, as Veterans Appreciation Month in the city of Lakewood, and encourages all citizens to recognize the valor and sacrifice of our veterans and to actively support our local veterans and their family members. Proclaim this fifth day of November, 2018. Don Anderson, Mayor. Colonel Veseli? Would I say some words?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. I'm truly honored to accept this Veterans' Day proclamation from our community connector city of Lakewood. Thank you for remembering and honoring America's veterans. Our veterans' loyalty to our country and their courage makes our nation what it is today, the land of the free and home of the brave, a beacon of hope in an increasingly complex world. Mr. Mayor, again, I appreciate our partnership and Lakewood's continued support and commitment to all who have served, including the Lancer Brigade, and are continuing to serve or will plan to serve our country in the future.
Thank you. And now I'd like to invite Colonel Nicole Lucas, Garrison Commander of JBLM, to the podium, where we recognize the importance of JBLM to the area not only as a source of power and projection in the Pacific, but as an economic driver in our area. So I'd like to introduce a short video that was commissioned by the South Sound Military and Communities Partnership, a study by Washington, University of Washington Tacoma, and produced by Pierce County Television. I'd also like to thank the Public Affairs Office at JBLM Garrison for being so helpful and providing access for the filming of that piece. And now, I'd like to read the proclamation for Colonel Lucas. Whereas the South Sound Military and Communities Partnership commissioned a study in 2018 by the University of Washington Tacoma's Center for Business Analytics of the Economic Impact of Joint Base Lewis McCord, and whereas the result of the completed economic analysis demonstrated that the economic impact from Joint Base Lewis McCord provides more than $9 billion in annual benefit to Pierce County and the South Puget Sound region, and whereas directly employing 55,000 active duty service members and Department of Defense civilians, Joint Base Lewis McCord is the largest employer in Pierce County and the second largest in the state, and whereas 45,000 military dependents and 32,000 retirees with those people, Joint Base Lewis McCord directly serves a population of over 120,000 people, and whereas the industrial businesses located throughout Pierce County and the deepwater port of Tacoma serve a critical role in the transportation of military supplies and support of military readiness and base operations, and whereas Joint Base Lewis McCord serves as a strategic location for the defense of the nation, allowing the military to quickly respond and deploy to situations around the world, and whereas Joint Base Lewis McCord is an integral part of the fabric of the South Puget Sound area and state economies, both supported by and supporting hundreds of private businesses. Now therefore, be it resolved that the City of Lakewood Council does hereby acknowledge the economic impact of $9 billion by the presence of Joint Base Lewis McCord and the mutually beneficial partnership between the city and the base. Proclaim this fifth day of November, 2018. Don Anderson, Mayor. Colonel Lucas?
Thank you. So thanks, Mayor Anderson, for this proclamation and certainly the work together. It's really an honor to be here tonight to acknowledge, you know, the value of JBLM, but really also it's my honor to be here representing all those folks that you just referenced on JBLM to say thank you, because it isn't just what's inside the gates that makes JBLM so special or so powerful, it's really the partnership with our neighbors in Lakewood being one of our, being our biggest neighbor and one of our most important neighbors. It's those partnerships that really solidify the value and the importance of JBLM as that power-projection platform you talked about and the access that this area provides to the importance of our mission. So it's really great to be here on your Veterans' Day celebration as well, because it's always a time of year that's kind of near and dear to all of our hearts, and to see so many of you that have been in uniform in the past, and just the friendship and support of Lakewood to all of our JBLM residents is something that's really special to all of us. So again, the work that went into producing this information about JBLM was, you know, it's almost, when we go back and talk to INCOM and DOD about it, it's really innovative, and so it's so great that we're doing yet another innovative thing here at JBLM and in the South Sound region, so thanks.
Thanks again.
Yeah, thank you.
Would you please come up, both of you, and take the obligatory photograph with council? And while we're transitioning to the next proclamation, I'd be remiss if I didn't acknowledge, for your recognition, Lakewood Special Veteran, Retired Lieutenant General and Mayor Emeritus, William Harrison, former commander of First Corps and Seventh Infantry Division, who's snuck into the back corner here. General Harrison. So we're now going to recognize November as American Indian Heritage Month and invite Mr. Hanford McLeod to the podium with Deputy Mayor Wayland to receive proclamation. Mr. McLeod is a member of the Tribal Council in the Squawly Tribe.
Well, following the very welcoming event we had at the Tribal Council meeting last month, we strengthened the bond between our two communities, and we are very pleased tonight to present this proclamation to you. Whereas the Nisqually and Stolicon people were the first inhabitants of what is now the city of Lakewood, using the prairie lands as a ready source of food and a gathering place, and whereas Native American contributions are woven deeply into our city's rich tapestry and history, and whereas Native Americans have influenced every stage of our city's development, Native Americans have played a vital role in our community, and their contributions have enhanced the prosperity and greatness of our city today, and importantly, as we recognize Veterans' Day, it's important to realize and to note the Native American people have participated in every major U.S. military encounter from the Revolutionary War to today's conflicts in the Middle East, serving at a higher rate in proportion to their population than any other ethnic group, and whereas Native Americans are a testament to the deep importance of culture and the vibrancy of traditions passed down from generation to generation, and whereas our community affirms and reaffirms its commitment to respect and preserve the traditions and cultures and to honor the unique heritage of our first inhabitants. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Lakewood City Council hereby proclaims November, 2018, as American Indian Heritage Month, and the city of Lakewood calls upon all citizens to commemorate this month with appropriate programs and activities, including culture and art, that we will get to experience tonight. Proclaim this fifth day of November, 2018. Don Anderson, Mayor. And I turn it over to you, council member.
Thank you.
For a few words, and certainly your family is here tonight. We very much appreciate you being here.
Yeah, no, this is awesome.
Let me give you the proclamation so we can get a photograph for you. And then we'll get your family down, but she'll take a quick picture there. Okay.
Just cut him off. He's my personal photographer.
Sir, the floor is yours.
All right. Thank you. Well, thank you so much for that. This is, I think, a wonderful event. I got my boys here with me, you know, it's following what we just followed, you know, I just want to say that I want to add the due diligence to this work, and we're gonna sing a song here in honor of this proclamation here, and this, it's almost like an exchange, you know, we want to kind of keep it that way, we want to kind of keep that relationship that we've talked about, and moving forward in a good direction with all of us together. So. All four of these are my boys? Yeah, we'll come up here. All right, this is, these are not only my boys, but this is part of our canoe family. This is my youngest one here, he's still learning. So, we're just going right here. All right. That choir, now, I'm sure enough to think that's about that. Bring the beat here, bring it down. And this song here that we're going to share is a song that they composed of in 2016, and a lot of what we do, especially when it comes to our drums and our, you know, not as an instrument, but more as a, as a way of our life, sharing these songs. Through these songs, these guys have learned this way of culture and heritage. And this song represents our mountain, called Mount Rainier, but in a hill, in a story told to us by one of our elders a long time ago, it was called Pecoma, Pecoma, hence where you get Pecoma, Mount Paola, Mount Rainier. And we honor that, which means don't forget the water. Song was, uh, was singing for that, that page. Got it. How do you do it? Oh, 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 ay, oh, eh. Oh, oh, ay, oh, eh. Ay, oh, eh, ay, oh, eh. Salvi, ah, ay, oh, eh. Oh, oh, ay, oh, eh. Oh, oh, ay, oh, eh. Ay, oh, eh, ay, oh, eh. Salvi, ah, ay, oh, eh. Oh, oh, ay, oh, eh. Oh, oh, ay, oh, eh. Ay, oh, eh, ay, oh, eh. Salvi, ah, ay, oh, eh. Oh, oh, ay, oh, eh. Oh, oh, ay, oh, eh. Ay, oh, eh, ay, oh, eh. Salvi, ah, ay, oh, eh. So once again, before we leave, we appreciate. We're thankful also for this recognition here, especially with the city of Lakewood, and I know this building relationship that we have and what we're working towards, this is, this is a good piece to that, and recognizing, especially Native American Month, I wanted to share that song, and I told these guys that part of that training and who we are, of that sharing and giving back. Come from a long line of military and to see some of that, you know, it does bring joy, because we share the same month with a lot of those veterans, you know, and a lot of our veterans too that we have, and to recognize that, you know, I know it means a lot to our people and to the surrounding area around us, you know, we want to, we want to continue this working relationship, and we want to continue to walk down this path together, you know, and sharing this culture and this heritage is who we are, and part of that, you know, as my name, Hweekwadiah Hanford McLeod, which in our language, Hweekwadiah means thunder and high clouds, my grandma, which, that side of the family where it came from, you know, and recognizing that, you know, showing these, these young guys here that this is, this is who we are, you know, there's no, there's no getting around that in sharing, sharing these songs, and not only for the sake of where we're at, but for the sake of our spirit and who we are when we get recognized like this, you know, that appreciation for that, so I thank you guys.
A council member. Council member McLeod, please step down in front with your family for photographs, please.
You guys are great. You guys can project. Come on. We're gonna take a picture.
Nicely done.
Was he live streaming? He was recorded for us. This room, and, and.
One, two, three. One more, one, two, three. Last one, one, two, three. Good smile!
And we'll have one more song here. The only condition is I don't have to sing or dance.
Oh, eh. We, oh, oh, eh. We, oh, oh, eh. Oh, oh, eh. Oh, oh, eh. We, oh, oh, eh. We, oh, oh, eh. Oh, oh, eh. Oh, oh, eh. We, oh, oh, eh.
Thank you.
Lot of these songs that we sing, they come from, uh, they come from journeys, but they're in that journeys that we teach these young ones is that when we come together, it's like a socialize for these, for these young ones here. For myself too, I've been, I've been a part of that canoe journey for the last seventeen years, and I've grown immensely in that. But in that journeys, I've grown also within my community and also as a council member, which when you stand these young ones up, it gives them more pride to, to do more work. And to do, that part of it is to share that. And so that song really was a, a song composed by another canoe family that these guys all hang out and they sing songs at night with, right? You can see some of that giggling and smiling in there. That's part of that. I tell them, you guys, you're not singing for girls, okay? So stop smiling out there, because they're not smiling back looking at you guys, right? But again, you know, they love, they enjoy that, but that's part of that teaching that we, we show them that they, they recognize where that song comes from. It, it's a, it's a public domain song that is allowed to sing with these boys because they sing with a lot of these groups, you know? And, and that old, old teaching about these songs is what we want to bring back, right? These songs, especially T'K'K'ma, but we have another one we sing, it's like a national anthem, we call it, the Nusquali National Anthem. It was given back to us by an elder. And that elder held on to that song for who knows how long, probably his whole life, you know, sixty-five, seventy years. But before that, it was passed on to him. And it was told to give it back to a Nusquali descendant or Nusquali, because this is where that song comes from. And so we had a big group in this whole area right up in here, along this prairie, of, um, uh, twenty, uh, fifteen individual villages. And if you can imagine a village, and I talk about that with these schools, because these are McLeod boys here, they come from a McLeod family. You know, he may be an Austin, he may be a Sanchez, but his grandma was a McLeod, right? So we have a immensely big group of McLeod's that come from the Hudson Bay era with John McLeod, who had residency and had family, you know, in this area, you know? And this huge name, we could have had our own village because Don and Andrew, Don, Don had eight kids, Andrew had thirteen kids. And those kids had kids, and this is where we all teach and learn this from as a family. In the beginning, it was a family. And so I love, I love showcasing them because my dad did that with me when I started doing this work twenty years ago. So now it's these guys' turn. So I'm glad we came, you know? It was good, good, good energy here, good spirit here, and I'm thankful for that, especially these guys, they've been one. It's Native American Month, so we're gonna be traveling to a lot of different schools. And I've mentioned that before about, about bringing us in as a, as a canoe family, not as, not as the tribe, well, as a tribe, we were with the tribe, but the canoe family's the one that does all the singing and sharing. And that's who we are. And skipper, and skippers here, these young ones here, both skippers in training, learning to control our canoe with twelve people in it, so. Got a lot of catching up to do, I know that. I'm great, grateful for the start that we have now.
Well, thank you. And, and, boys, I, I know your, your dad's probably a, a pretty serious critic, but it sounded great to us. We now move to the public comment section of the program. This is when any member of the public may speak to any item of interest to the city, whether or not it is on the agenda. Please limit your, your comments to three minutes. Identify yourself at the podium by name and city resident, such as Jason Whalen, Lakewood, Washington. Limited to three minutes. The yellow light comes on when you have thirty seconds left. The red light comes on when your time has expired. First person who has signed up is Mr. Dennis Haugen. Mr. Haugen. Mr. Glenn, well, move to Mr. Glenn Spieth, if you're ready.
Glenn Spieth, Lakewood. I'd like to encourage you to continue your efforts to straighten out our elder care facilities here in Lakewood and keep people that shouldn't be placed in them, keep them out. My mother was in one in Oak Brook for three years, four years, and it was great for her, good place at the time. I'd hate to see the kinds of things that are going on now continue. So I encourage you to do everything you can. There's also a new exhibit at our local aviation museum. There's a new scout helicopter that's being worked on for a future display here, probably this early next summer. But I think you all know where, but in case you don't, the helicopter's right across the street from the skate park. So far, no graffiti, but the truck nearby certainly has a good bit. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Haugen. Just talking about North Dakota at work today. You know?
Dennis Haugen, Lakewood, Washington.
A business.
Correct. That is absolutely right. Race has become a business.
That's true.
And race is true stuff as well, you know? It can be harsh, it can also be true. And unfortunately, that's what it comes down to. Black community needs new leaders. That is why in this I understood that race has become a business, and they have, they have, they were, they were effortful right now, so it's effortful.
As a Dallas talk, I'm sure you know them.
Yes.
I know you know them, and you saw freedom, yes, on this program. Like he wants to host a White House summit on the issue of race. I think Kanye will be there, and I think you will be too.
Right, so we're doing a general point USA, Young Black Leadership Summit out of ODC. And the reason for that, I understand the criticism, the lack of state law, you can't use race, you can't use any politics. Yes, we need to do that, because there have been so many black conservatives who have had their voices silenced, but we're told not to think of those ideas. We want to send a message strong, let's just tell them that the time is now, and that they are not doing one. There are plenty of black people like that, and it's time to let them feel like they need to be able to do this.
You get this summit.
New black leaders with an existential view.
Next is Julian Wheeler.
Good evening, Your Honor. Deputy Mayor, councilman, other members and staff, wanted to thank you for having me here tonight, Julian Wheeler. I am here personally, but also on behalf of the Pierce County Accessible Community Advisory Committee. And incidentally, in light of our upcoming Veterans Day holiday, I'm also a disabled military veteran. And I wanted to, I was served in the US Army, stationed at Joint Base Lees McCord. And in light of our proclamation on the American Indian Heritage Month, I don't think that they're still here, but I do attend prayer on many occasions at a sweat lodge on the P'Alap Indian Reservation for military veterans. So I do, to introduce myself in that manner, I would say that on my mother's side, I am of French and Mayflower English heritage, and on my father's side, I am Mixtec Indian as well as Aztec and Spanish and Basque heritage. That's how I would introduce myself at, at a sweat lodge. But I wanted to come to say that as Chair of the Accessible Community Advisory Committee, quite simply, I want to say that there is money on the table, and I want to strike when the iron is hot. And I understand the best time would be during budget season, and I would suggest that having lobbied as a volunteer to other organizations for their budgets, we do have, I know that there are moments when there is a proposed budget item, if it touches on accessibility, if it was passed over due to limited revenue, not enough funds, that if there's a council member or staff or volunteer who wants to advance it to the Accessible Community Advisory Committee for consideration, we will consider it as a project. And the ACAC was passed in accordance with a state law that was passed in 2010, and Pierce County Council passed an ordinance in 2014. The ACAC is four years old towards the end of this year. Our next meeting is Tuesday, November thirteenth, nine o'clock in the morning, at the Pierce County Human Services Soundview Building. It's, uh, there's still enough time for me to attend the mayor's coffee class that morning, so wanted to just mention that. And people are welcome to come to our meetings. We're looking for new members and new ideas. And we heard, I want to advise council members and decision makers about disability services, including the Governor's Committee on Disability Issues and Employment, which has gone out to different cities in the state of Washington for community outreach activities to understand how things are happening for people with disabilities and others. And I want to mention that we might do a community outreach here in Pierce County, and we are funded by traffic or parking fines for people who park illegally in disability parking spots without valid permit. Thank you very much. Hope to see you again. Take care.
That's all the people who've signed up for public comment, but that is, does not preclude you, if you wish to speak, please step forward to the microphone. Is there anyone else who wishes to make public comment? Is there anyone else who wishes to speak at public comment? Hearing no one, I declare public comment closed. We now move to the consent agenda. Madam Clerk.
A, approval of the minutes of the City Council Special Meeting of October second, 2018. B, approval of the minutes of the City Council Special Meeting of October third, 2018. C, approval of the minutes of the City Council Study Session of October eighth, 2018. D, approval of the minutes of the City Council Special Meeting of October tenth, 2018. E, approval of the minutes of the City Council Meeting of October fifteenth, 2018. F, approval of the minutes of the City Council Retreat of October twentieth, 2018. G, approval of the minutes of the City Council Study Session of October twenty-second, 2018. H, approval of the minutes of the City Council Special Meeting of October twenty-ninth, 2018. I, approval of payroll checks in the amount of $2,503,340.76 for the period of September sixteenth, 2018 through October fifteenth, 2018. J, approval of claims vouchers in the amount of $2,56,486.24 for the period of September fifteenth through October fifteenth, 2018. K, motion number 2018-70, authorizing the execution of an agreement with Gordon Thomas Honeywell Governmental Affairs in the amount of $58,380 for state governmental relation services from January one, 2019 through December thirty-first, 2019. L, motion number 2018-71, authorizing the execution of an agreement with Johnson Group in the amount of $54,000 for federal governmental relation services from January one, 2019 through December thirty-first, 2019. M, motion number 2018-72, authorizing the execution of an agreement with KBH Construction, Inc., in the amount of $200,000 for the construction of Gateway Monument signs at Custer Road West at Seventy-Fourth Street, Military Road at One Hundred and Twelfth Street Southwest, and Silicon Boulevard Southwest at Far West Drive Southwest. N, motion number 2018-73, authorizing the execution of agreement with KPFF Consulting Engineers Incorporated in the amount of $66,830 for structural engineering design services for the Silicon Boulevard, Far West Drive to Weller Road project. O, motion number 2018-74, authorizing the execution of an agreement with Northeast Electric, LLC, in the amount of $242,250 for the construction of the 2018 citywide electrical repair project. P, motion number 2018-75, authorizing the execution of an amendment to the agreement with Robert Droll, Landscape Architect, P.S., increasing spending in the amount of $167,112 for Harry Todd Park Waterfront Improvement Phase Two. Q, items filed in the office of the City Clerk. One, Landmarks and Heritage Advisory Board meeting minutes of August twenty-third, 2018. Two, Planning Commission meeting minutes of September nineteenth, 2018. Three, Community Service Advisory Board meeting minutes of September nineteenth, 2018. And four, Community Service Advisory Board meeting minutes of October tenth, 2018.
Thank you. Is there any item which any member of the council wishes to have removed from the consent agenda? During that, I entertain a motion.
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
It's been moved by Mr. Simpson, seconded by Mr. Whalen, that we adopt the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? The law in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. Motion carries. We now move to the regular agenda, public hearings and appeals. Madam Clerk.
This is a date set for a public hearing on the 2019 slash 2020 proposed biennial budget and 2019 property tax levy.
For this, we have Ms. Kraus.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. So in addition to the state law requiring City Council to pass the budget by December thirty-first, 2018, we are required to hold a public hearing on the proposed budget and property tax. Prior to the public hearing, the city has held five open public meetings to review the proposed biennial budget. All documents have been made available to the public, either in hard copy and/or electronically. Since the budget was presented to the City Council on October first, there have been three changes proposed. The first is an increase in the amount of transfers from the real estate excise tax in 2019, and this transfer is to the Parks CIP. In the Parks CIP fund, the change is to increase the budget by $120,000 in 2019, and that is to add $50,000 in 2019 for the Oak Brook Park improvements, being funded by REIT. And that additional $13,000 from REIT is coming from an increase in the 2018 year-end estimate. And the other $37,000 would come from Pierce County funds. The other project is adding $70,000 in 2019 for restroom improvements at the pavilion in the parks. For Fund 195, which is the Public Safety Grant Fund, the City Council received information on the Veterans Court at the presentation from municipal court. So we're proposing to add $105,306 in 2019 in both revenues and expenditures, and $130,037 in 2024 Veterans Court. As part of this grant acceptance, we are also adding a... As part of this grant's acceptance, we are also adding a .50 FTE for a court clerk limited term position that expires on 12/31/2020, and this is being funded within the general fund with no budgetary impact since the grant is paying for a portion of the probation officer. The adjusted 2019 and '20 biennial budget totals $87,577,000 in round numbers in 2019 and $92,054,000 in 2020. General government funds make up $56 million roughly, or 64% of the proposed budget. Capital projects account for about $14 million in 2019 and $20 million in 2020, and the internal service accounts for about 13% of the budget, enterprise funds accounting for about 7% of the budget. The total revenues for all funds totals $57,494,000 in 2019 and $61,550,000 in 2020. Taxes, being the sales tax, property tax, utility tax, gambling tax, admissions tax, and real estate excise tax, accounts for 54% or just over $31 million in 2019, and 51% in 2020, or about $31,284,000. Other operating revenues account for about 29% in each of the years, and that includes state shared revenues, charges for services, fines and forfeitures, and permits and licenses. Other sources account for 17% or $9,675,000 in 2019 and $13,108,000 in 2020. On the expenditure side, total expenditures for all funds total $55,740,000 in 2019 and $65,246,000 in 2020. Public safety, which accounts for the police department's budget, criminal prosecution and municipal court, accounts for 49% or $27,362,000 in 2019 and 43% in 2020. And that is being followed by other sources or other uses, and that includes your capital projects, your debt service, internal service, and grant funds, and that accounts for 23%. And then you have the other departments, the City Council's budget, City Manager, what I call support services, legal, administrative services, and non-departmental, accounting for about 9% of the budget, or $5.2 million in 2019, and $4,980,000 or 8% in 2020. The other three departments are Community and Economic Development, which accounts for about $2.5 million in 2019 and 2020, so that represents about 5%. We have Parks, Recreation and Community Services, accounting for about 10% of the total expenditures at 5, roughly $5.5 million in each year. And then Public Engineering, Public Works Engineering, counts for about 4% at just over $2,450,000. On the general fund side, General and Street Fund, the revenues are about $40 million in each of the years, with taxes accounting for about 69% of the budget. Other operating revenues account for the other 30%, and that's primarily, again, in the state shared revenues, charges for services, fines and forfeitures and permits. And then other sources, such as grants and contributions, account for about 1% at about $143,000. On the expenditure side, similar to what I just mentioned on the expenditures for all funds, public safety, which includes the police department, criminal prosecution and municipal court, account for about 69% of the budget. The General and Street operating expenditures, personnel costs account for 67% of the budget, and services and charges is about $6.8 million or 17%. And so those are the two biggest areas. Supplies come in at about $700,000 or 2%. Inter-fund charges, these are your internal service charges, are about $5.6 million or 14%. In terms of ending fund balance, the General and Street Fund, ending fund balances total $5.5,338,000 in 2019 and $4,867,000 in 2020, and continues to meet the 12% targets reserves that has been established per the financial policies. For the number of city employees, I mentioned the slight change of adding the .5 limited term for a .5 FTE in court clerk for municipal court. Other changes on the personnel side is converting a couple of the assistant city manager positions with no impact to the FTE change, one of them being the senior policy analyst, and the other one being a planning manager for special projects. We're included in elimination of vacant court clerk, that's 1 point FTE, offset by the .5 limited term court clerk position. In Legal Department, we've eliminated the vacant assistant, office assistant, as well as the executive assistant. In Community Development, we've converted the administrative assistant for the rental housing safety program from a limited term to a regular position with no end date. And then we've added a program coordinator, which is a 1.0 FTE in support of rental housing safety and abatement program, and that is currently a limited term position through 12/31/2020. On the Public Works Engineering side, we've eliminated a vacant engineering tech position as well as an associate engineering technician that was a limited term position. We've also have a, two limited term positions in Public Works Engineering that will be eliminated at the end of 2019. Other services and program changes outside of capital and internal service, which I'll go through in a little bit, we've added $50,000 for non-motorized plan update, $34,000 per year for an apprenticeship program in the Community and Economic Development Department, $2,500 per year to support the city's equity team, a reduction of $8,000 per year in the employee recognition, volunteer recognition, wellness program, and leadership academy with no change in the service, $39,000 added per year for street landscaping contracted services, added $25,000 for a legacy plan update, added $4,000 per year for Parks employee clothing per the Ask Me Collective bargaining agreement. We've put in a $758,000 one-year deferral of fleet and equipment replacement reserves, and we're also anticipating $200,000 per year savings from police personnel cost savings. On the debt management side, you've heard about the SSMCP or SMP's rate increase for the city from an AA minus to AA double A. And our annual general fund supports about $440,000 in general obligation debt, that equates to about 1.1% of general fund operating revenues. We do also have some other debt that is being paid by special assessments, and these are for Public Works trust fund loans, as well as our two local improvement districts for street improvements that are being paid by property owners. You heard from last October 22 meeting on the financial policies in term of the surface water management, that remains the same, and we'll be looking at revising our policies in Jan, in first quarter of 2019. On the capital side, the 2019 and 2020 proposed biennial budget includes $5,585,000 for Parks CIP. This includes $2,545,000 biennium total for Fort Silicon Park, $1.3 million for Harry Todd Park, $900,000 for Spring Brook Park, $250,000 for American Lake Park, $200,000 for Chambers Creek Trail, $150,000 for Gateways, $30,000 for Ward's Lake, $50,000 for the Oak Brook Park Playground Improvement, $40,000 for Park Improvement Replacement, $20,000 for Playground Resurfacing, and $100,000 in Project Support. On the transportation capital side, the budget, proposed budget is $20,975,000. That includes $12,874,000 in sidewalk improvements, $2,651,000 for annual programs such as street lighting, minor capital, major maintenance, and chip seal program. We've proposed $2,127,000 for the Colonial Center Plaza, $1,804,000 for street improvements, $678,000 in overlay, $551,000 in traffic signal, $330,000 in non-motorized trail, and $50,000 in safety improvements. On the sewer capital side, we're proposing capital projects related to sewers at $1,227,000 plus $70,000 for administrative costs. These include the side sewer CIPs, North Thorne Lane Sewer Extension, Maple Street Sewer Extensions, and Fort Silicon Park Sewer Extensions. On the internal service side, the proposed budget includes over, it's $1,501,000 in proposed fleet and vehicle equipment replacement and purchases. We also included $163,000 for various property management projects and $484,000 in information technology and systems upgrades. So that concludes the 2019 and '20 public hearing. I was going to move on to the property tax portion of it, if that's all right. So on the property tax, the city is authorized to increase its property tax annually up to the lesser of implicit price deflator, or 1%. The implicit price deflator for 2019 property tax is at 2.169%. So the recommendation, which will be made to the City Council on November 19, is continue to increase the property tax collections by 1%. The city has done that for a number of years, and actually since 2006, and if we don't take this 1% increase, that impact over the six-year period would be $423,000. We're seeing our assessed value increase by about 14%, which reduces the city levy rate by almost 10% and increases the city property tax levy by 2.8%. So following this public hearing, the next steps are, on November 13, the City Council will review the 2019 human services funding, the 2019 lodging tax recommendations, the fee schedule amendments, the consolidation of the sewer funds, the two capital sewer funds, reviewing the sewer utility surcharge amendments, and reviewing the 2019-20 proposed biennial budget. And that concludes my presentation.
Counsel, have any questions before we move to public testimony? Mr. Whalen.
Just to clarify, and the last point on the tax levy is, I understand that 2019 preliminary levy rate per thousand is 1.03, which is down from 1.14 from the prior year.
Yes, the, yes.
Which is significant, frankly.
Yes, as, as assessed value increases, the levy rate decreases, so, yes.
Right, spread out among more properties, hopefully.
Yeah, spread out.
Right. Thank you.
Mr. Bulkey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On page 207, where you do the calculations, I'm confused on one point. On the levy rate calculation, it has the preliminary assessed value divided by 1,000, and then it says assessed value per $1,000. But we already had, you usually have a rate per $1,000 rather than an assessed valuation per $1,000.
I'm sorry.
Page 207.
Yes, 207. So I've got the, are you looking at the?
Levy rate calculation. It says preliminary $6,847 million, divide by 1,000, and then it says assessed, 2018 assessed value per $1,000, and it says $6,847.
Yeah, so what that's doing is, it's taking the total assessed value for the city, and because our levy rate is applied to a per thousand, all we're doing here is saying that the total assessed value per one, for the 1,000 calculation is $6,847. So then we're taking the 2019 preliminary levy and dividing that by that to get to the 1.03.
Okay, so it's part of a math calculation, rather than, I'm concentrating on the words, but, okay, great. And I appreciate the, I would, I have to say, this is, you know, compliment to the entire city staff, and to good economic times, but to the staff, because I've gripped before, that the amount of new construction is now up preliminarily at $92 million, which is very, very good for this city.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Then we'll move to public testimony. If you wish to speak at the public hearing, you have the opportunity to sign up, and if you haven't signed up, you'll have the opportunity to, also to speak. The rules are very similar to the public comment that we had earlier. However, the topic is limited to the 2019-2020 proposed biennial budget and the 2019 property tax levy. You have three minutes to speak. The yellow light comes on at 30 seconds, red light comes on when your time is up. Person who has signed up is Mr. Dennis Haugen.
What's missing? Predictive analytics. If you're good at it, you'll probably succeed in business. If you're not, you'll eventually fail. Pat Finnegan, about 10, 15 years ago, looked at the budget, said, what are we spending on all of this, or interpreters and attorneys in our court system? Attorneys in our court system, are they citizens of the United States? Okay? Who would that require to answer that question if you don't have it? Data gathering. Really strange thing when you talk to somebody on the West Coast that's in, it's in a position of elected official, they don't know anything. But you talk to somebody in other states, and they're very clear about where the money is going in the budget. If you even suspect that money is going to an illegal purpose, to aid an illegal purpose, then rational people say, let's check it out. You gotta be really living under a rock if now after 10 or 15 years later, you haven't learned that we don't have an illegal immigration problem in terms of what it's costing us in money, budgets, lives, and even drugs. That money starts to flow, when it gets going and gets out of control, somebody benefits from that illegal activity, and they start paying off politicians. Kilduff, Christine Kilduff, in my opinion, when I asked her, what's more important? Our citizens here and the safety here? Or is it important for you to get down there and get in the way of Donald Trump trying to stop illegal activity across the border? She right away jumped into the narrative. In my opinion, Christine Kilduff is not fit to run for an office in this state or country. She needs to go to Venezuela or Saudi Arabia and run for office until she learns who she represents, and read the Constitution, and sign every paragraph in there before you run for office.
That's all the people who've signed up to speak at public hearing on the 2018 year end, excuse me, it's 2018, I just got shuffled here, excuse me, the 2019-20 biennial budget and the 2019 property tax levy. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak at the public hearing? Is there anyone else who wishes to speak at the public hearing? Seeing none, I declare the public hearing closed. We now move to the public hearing on the proposed 2018 year-end budget amendment. Madam Clerk.
This is the date set for a public hearing on the proposed 2018 year-end budget adjustment.
And for this, we have Ms. Kraus.
Good evening again. So since the last time the budget adjustment was presented to the City Council on October 22nd, there have been three changes, actually four changes. The first one is the change in the accounting of the Leonard Thomas punitive damages case that is now being accounted for in the Internal Service Fund under
that is now being accounted for in the Internal Service Fund under the risk management and a charge back to the general fund. In addition to that change, there were three other funds that needed to have budget adjustments, and that includes the felony seizure fund. This is an addition of 50,000 in expenditures, offset by $50,000 in felony seizure revenues. So no impact to the general fund. On the public safety grant side, we're adding 72,000 in expenditures, offset by $72,000 in grant revenues. On the risk management side, we're adding $100,000 in claims, offset by $100,000 in insurance recoveries. And the reason for these changes is, we had a little bit more information, and we're seeing that we're nearing the budgetary, the authorized budget, so we needed to account for the additional revenues that are coming in to support those changes. Other than that, the budget adjustment remains the same. No other changes in any of the other line items that were previously presented, and that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. There any questions for Ms. Kraus on the 2018 year-end budget adjustment before we move to public testimony? During then, we'll move to public testimony. You've just heard the rules for a public hearing, but I'll repeat them briefly. You have three minutes to speak. The items, comments are limited to the topic of the 2018 year-end budget adjustment. Yellow light comes on at 30 seconds, red light comes on when your time is done. The only person who signed up is Mr. Dennis Haugen.
Dennis Haugen, Lakewood, Washington. So this adjustment, now, in this adjustment in the budget, did you put any money in there to gather data in the court system? How much money we're spending on attorneys and interpreters and jail time and cop time and running around in circles with illegal aliens? Did you put that in the budget on your adjustment for 2019? So that a year from now, when somebody asks you, you can intelligently, speak intelligently with other states and other people you have to, or will you just look down at your shoes? It's an embarrassing question. Don't know. I don't know if we got going through the, I don't know. That's the way they act when you ask them a question they can't answer. You ask the lieutenant governor of Texas what it's costing them, and he will just rattle off number after number after number. And it's only reasonable to assume that those states that don't keep records have got a problem. It's probably just as great as the people who got records and know what it costs, you know? One way to avoid everything is don't gather the data. And what does that take? Put another sentence on a form. Are you legal or illegal? That's all it takes. Then you gather that data, and the end of the year, oh yeah, gee, we spent X number of dollars on illegal activity. The reason you don't do it is some false notion that we need to treat illegal, illegal immigrants differently than legal people. And we got attorneys, garbage. Doesn't everybody swear to the Constitution? Then who do you owe your allegiance to? The health and well-being of your own citizens, first, not second. First. Just because you don't ask questions, just because you don't keep records, does not mean you shouldn't be held accountable.
That's all the people who've signed up to speak at the public hearing on the 2018 year-end budget adjustment. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak at the public hearing? Is there anyone else who wishes to speak at the public hearing? If you do, please step forward. Seeing none, I declare the public hearing closed. We now move to ordinances. Ordinance number 698. Madam Clerk. Mr. Branstad.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I, you know, we've just completed the two public hearings, and in the first public hearing, there was a series of comments that did not seem to be related to the matter that the hearing was for, and that constituted personal opinion and comments, you know, about an elected official. And I'm wondering what the procedure is, or if there is a procedure, to have those comments not be included in the record of the public hearing on the 2019-2020 budget, since they weren't germane.
As presiding officer, I will allow those to be included. I give wide latitude to citizen participants. I believe the First Amendment is sacrosanct in the ability to stand in the public square and say the king is an idiot. You don't have to be right. If you're marginally civil, I'll let you proceed, and err in the side of caution in that regard. Not that we agree with that conduct, but allow it to stand.
Ordinance number 698, adopting a new chapter to the Lakewood Municipal Code, Lakewood Family Wage Jobs Credit Program, setting an effective date and establishing a sunset date.
Thank you, Mr., mister, thank you, thank you, Mayor Anderson, excuse me. There's a brief history to this. It's outlined in your report, which is found on page 215. This began back in July 17, 2018, when the Pierce County Council approved a family wage jobs credit program. The amount was $275 rebate per employee. This was in response to the Seattle City Council voting to impose a $275 head tax for for-profit companies. That grossed over more than 20 million. And the proposal by the county was to find a way of increasing economic activity and potentially attracting employers from King County to Pierce County. Lakewood City Council expressed an interest in this program. We received an initial report on September 7th. On October 22nd, you found another report, or obtained a copy of a second report, which had a draft ordinance. That draft ordinance was reviewed by the city council and is again attached to your packet this evening. The recommendation is, is that the city council take action to adopt the ordinance. Do you have any questions, the staff?
Questions for Mr. Buer. Mr. Bulkey.
Thank you, Mayor Anderson. So, Mr. Buer, just to edify all of us, when we credit City of Lakewood by crediting certain charges and fees associated with establishing or expanding a business, what will those eligible credit, what will those, what are the eligible certain charges and fees?
Okay.
That will be rebated?
That's actually found on page 219, under definition of eligible charges and fees. The fees that are listed that could be used to provide for the rebate would be building permits, downtown planned traffic mitigation fees, critical area review and land use actions such as conditional use permits, permits or administrative variances or variances. Now expressly, expressly excluded from those charges would be state building code charges. There are certain types of state building code fees that come with each building permit. We would still have to pay those, and so those would be exempt from collection. Tacoma Pierce County Health Department charges and fees, that's most likely affiliated with septic systems, which we still do have some in the City of Lakewood. Recordation fees, which is something that the county wants, and there are additional funds that go with those recordation fees to support other programs. Fire inspection charges, because we owe the fire district their funds for the plan review that they perform. And then we prohibit the use of residential land use actions. So if you were to come in for a building permit for a new single-family residence or for an addition, that would not be included. Now, the interesting thing about this, the council's clear, say, Mr. Anderson makes widgets, for example, and does a very good job and has five employees, and his business is so good that he hires five more and has 10 employees, and wants to apply for this credit program. You're only allowed to apply for the credit program if you're making or charging a building permit fee. You have to pay something into the system in order to receive a credit. So if you're creating jobs and not getting a building permit, you're not allowed to use the system, because then all of a sudden, it would be a gift to public funds.
Mr. Branstad.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Buer, regards to you have to be constructing something, does that include making leasehold improvements to a structure you do not own, but for which you are paying for building permit?
If you are not the owner of the property, and you are making improvements, and if that building permit is in the name of your company, then you would be eligible for the credit program.
Hey, thank you. And then, could you just explain the structure of the dates in the sunset provision?
Sure.
Where it says, "Applications must be submitted by December 31st, 2020, but the sunset date is December 31st, 2021." I'm trying to understand if someone, what has to happen by 2020? I mean, if you, is that the time that you have to have paid for the permits? Or do both the permits and the jobs have been created by the 2020 date? Or can you create the job in the 2020 to 2021 year? But how would you, would you apply if you, I don't, it seems odd.
Yes, it is a little odd, and it gets really wonky when you start thinking about it, but you have two dates. One is for the application, which you have until December 31st, 2020. Now, you fill out the application by that date, then we have until December 31st, 2021 to finish processing it. So then the program closes out, so it gives you an opportunity to review the final application and take action upon it.
So what you're saying is that from the perspective of an employer, the program sunsets at the end of 2020? Because you have to have both paid for permits and created a job by that date and applied? Because you can't apply until you've done the first two.
Right, yes.
So, the provisions of eligibility speak for creating a job that has an annual wage of $52,000 something. So if you create a job in November of 2020, that is an hourly wage job of $27 an hour, say, okay, but it's only been there for a month, but you intend to keep it long, and you state that in your application, are you eligible for this, since that would be a $54,000 a year if it's a full-time position job? Or do you have to have actually started the job in 2019, so that a one year has already gone by, and you've actually paid $52,000? The wording isn't clear about, it isn't clear about how the 50, verifying a $52,100 job is done. Does it actually have to, you have to have done that, or do you just have to have created the job with that pay rate?
The way I'll, I'll look at this is, it's not, it's to provide some level of flexibility for the person making the application. My feeling about this is, we get into this level of detail, if a person makes application by the, before the closeout date, provided that he has all of those things in position before the program expires, the city would accept that.
When you say all of those things, what are all those things? Specifically, I'm saying, does he have to have paid an employee $52,000? Or does he just have to have done a contract or have some sort of employment agreement that's going to pay this?
It says in the definitions, eligible charges and fees means monetary payments paid by the family wage jobs credit applicant or the applicant's agent to the City of Lakewood after December 31st, 2018 for building permits. As long as that date has been met, then my understanding that they would be applicable to move forward with their application.
Been moved to, moved by Mr. Whalen, second by Mr. Bulkey, that we adopt ordinance number 698. Is there any further discussion? During then, the law in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. We now move to resolutions. Resolution number 2018 day 16.
Resolution number 2018 dash 16, adopting the fiscal year 2019 policy statement for the CDBG and home consolidated annual action plan.
For this, we have Mr. Gumm.
Because if you get a building, two years to build the building, you'll never hire the employee. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, deputy mayor, members of the council. Kind of on a completely unrelated note, I want to kind of bring you up to speed with where we are with the abatement program. We had some repayments in the past three weeks that I thought were notable, that you guys would appreciate hearing. In the past three weeks, it has not come to the city yet, it's gone through the county, and we're in the process of receiving it, but about $75,000 in principal was repaid on six abatement projects, and interest amounting to about $19,800. So a significant chunk of money is set to come back in the next month. As for the action before you, it is a motion to approve the fiscal year 2019 policy statement. It's, for the most part, a perfunctory action at this point in time, where in year five, the city is, in its annual, or sorry, in its consolidated planning process, the consolidated plan ran 2015 through 2019. All CD, all CDBG funds and home funds go through a five-year cycle, as well as annual cycles inside that five-year cycle, so this is year five. We held a public hearing on October 4th of 2018 with the Community Services Advisory Board. We received about 21, or there was 21 people that were present at the hearing. 16 individuals provided testimony. From that, the advisory board reviewed the testimony, they reviewed previous funding cycles, looked at where we were on meeting our goals, and came to the conclusion that there would be no, or at least they were proposing no changes to the funding priorities, the goals. So that they were left with priority one, infrastructure, priority two, housing, priority three, public service, and priority four, economic development. With that, I leave it to the council if you have any questions of me, or any, any procedural questions regarding CDBG or home.
Mr. Whalen.
Thank you, Mr. Gumm. Appreciate the update on the funds coming back and the abatement.
Appreciate the update on the funds coming back in the abatement program. I'm sure they will be put back out to good use and service.
I think I may have spent them already.
I'm sure. I had a quick question on the CDBG policy statement and the funding categories that we've enjoyed and promoted as a matter of policy over the years. One question I had from a budget comment or update we had in the last couple of weeks was funds, CDBG funds used to pay for a vehicle. And I was trying to rack my brain and how that fit into our policy objectives and funding categories.
It's an admin expenditure. So you can use 20% of your CDBG funds to pay for...
So that was within the 20%, then?
It was within the 20%. I believe we spent 17.8 or 18% of our admin funds last year, not quite all of them.
Got it. Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Gumm? Entertain a motion?
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Simpson, seconded by Mr. Randstadter, that we adopt resolution number 2018 day 16. Is there any, is there any further comment, discussion? Hearing none, while all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. We now move to unfinished business. Motion number 2018 day 76.
Motion number 2018 dash 76, approving the 2019 Legislative Agenda, Legislative Policy Manual, Federal Priorities, and the Pierce County Policy Manual.
For this, we have Ms. Kelly Fong.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor.
Order of seniority, so.
Good evening, Mayor and Deputy Mayor, council members. The motion before you is the adoption of the following documents: the 2019 State Legislative Agenda, the 2019 Legislative Policy Manual, the 2019 Federal Priorities, and the 2019 Pierce County Policy Manual. These documents were last reviewed by the City Council at the City Council Retreat on October 20, 2018. The adoption of these documents would help establish a comprehensive set of policy priorities for the city that would help the city be more effective in communicating and achieving its state, federal, and local priorities. This concludes my presentation, so I turn the matter back to the council.
Any questions for Ms. Kelly Fong? Entertain a motion? It's been moved by Ms. Barth, seconded by Mr. Simpson, that we adopt motion number 2018 day 76. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, while all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. We now move to new business. Motion number 2018 day 77, Madam Clerk.
Motion number 2018 dash 77, authorizing the execution of an employment agreement with John J. Caulfield as city manager effective January 1, 2018.
So this is a matter that was discussed but not decided in executive session. For the record, we are offering a revision of the city manager's contract, which was last revised effective January 1, 2017. It has no termination date. It's rolling. It has some termination provisions, but it doesn't have a definite term. The items that were changed were the base pay was increased to $185,000 a year. The retirement contribution to the 457 plan was increased from $18,000 to $18,500. And then the car allowance remains the same, and all other provisions remain the same. So I entertain a motion to approve the revision of Mr. Caulfield's contract effective January 1, 2018.
Move adoption of motion number 2018 dash 77.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Mr. Whalen.
I just want to make a comment, even though we don't have a lot here. For purposes of receiving and hearing our comments, I just wanted to put in my two or four cents about the city manager. In the course and scope of providing review of the employment agreement with the city manager, we have the opportunity to receive the city manager's self-evaluation and recap of significant activities and accomplishments over the year in question. And I just want to say that if the citizens took the time to review that document, I think they'd be impressed and proud of what the city has accomplished through the city manager and his executive staff's leadership over that year, 2017. Now, while we are a bit tardy, because we are closing in on the end of 2018, I have to say that the accomplishments in 2017 were certainly laudatory, and I am thankful for that. And pleased to support the motion before us, which is to extend the contract with a salary increase that is well deserved.
Any other comments? I would echo Mr. Whalen's comments. Thank Mr. Caulfield for his continued service and note that now, with a different day job, have exposure to many public administrators. And the thing that impresses me the most with Mr. Caulfield's rather exemplary performance is not just the quality of the work or this character, but the sheer volume of initiatives that he has undertaken on behalf of the city. We can see some things, like the streets that are paved, community events, park improvements. But whether the initiative is leadership in the community among his peers, placing Lakewood in a leadership role, legislative initiatives, personnel development, there are many things going on at the same time. And it's a tremendous amount of work. And it is, in my opinion, well above the level of progress that I see in other places with a much lower level of conflict. So, thank you. There are no further discussion. I'd call for the question. While all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries. We now move to reports from the support side. Mr. Caulfield.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. A few updates. The first is, earlier this afternoon, I followed up with the DSHS secretary on several items. The first one was requesting some answers specific to the homicide in an adult family home business last week. Secondly, we inquired on a number of fronts as it relates to three sexually violent predators that are going to be released from McNeil Island and placed in an adult family home in Lakewood. In addition, it just so happened, as we were pulling this together this weekend and then finalized it this morning, that on Sunday, there was two items that just came out of nowhere as it relates to DSHS. The first was that our police department received a number of 911 calls from a number of residents who were down at Fort Stilliken Park, complaining about a woman who was running around and trying to break into cars and scaring children and things like that. So our officers went down there, responded, tried to make contact with the woman. She ran away, she hid behind a tree, she pulled down her pants. Long story short, our officers were able to, you know, essentially get a hold of her and trying to help her. And at that point in time, they were told that she had just been released from Western State Hospital. And I just described some of her physical condition. But her physical condition also included that she was covered with her own feces and blood as well, from essentially being outside. The good news is that, you know, our police officers, given the empathy and compassion that they have on how they do their job, were able to, you know, take care of her. And they took her off to St. Clair's Hospital, where they turned her over to some medical staff. So we have followed up with DSHS, and, you know, we'd just like to know, you know, how did this happen? What's her situation? You know, is she safe right now? Because, you know, the hospital's only going to hold on to her for a certain period of time. So hopefully, that's another area that we'll be able to get some answers on. Also, on Sunday, I think the council might be aware that there's a juvenile rehabilitation center on Western State Hospital called Oak Ridge Group Homes. And that's supposed to be somewhat of a secure facility. And three of the teenagers in there, two 17-year-olds and an 18-year-old, essentially escaped from the facility and were able to make their way out of the facility and are just, are out there. They're not from Lakewood. They have ties to Bremerton, Tukwila, and Seattle. Pursuant to our procedures in situations like this because they do have some kind of a, I want to say, I think, a criminal background. Felony warrants have been placed in the system if they do, if they are, somebody makes contact with them in the law enforcement arena. But likewise, we'd like to know, you know, from DSHS, you know, what are they doing regarding, you know, the condition of that facility in terms of ensuring that there's a safe and secure environment? And then what are they doing to try and track down, you know, these three teenage boys who need to be in this juvenile rehabilitation center? So those are just some of the questions that we've been raising. But of course, the two big ones is the homicide, as well as the release of those three very, 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 very dangerous predators from McNeil, from McNeil Island. So I'm hopeful that there'll be more information coming here in the very near future, if not tomorrow morning, first thing. But on that side, I am not holding my breath, quite frankly. A couple of things as it relates to some local issues. The first is, the city of Tacoma is moving forward with a study in the creation of a JBLM compatibility overlay district, similar to what exists in Lakewood on the east side, that, you know, the APZ zone. And they don't have one that extends into their part of the city. And so both SSMCP and the City of Lakewood have written letters of support. In addition, Mr. Buwer and his staff have actually provided Tacoma city staff some advice and some assistance there. On, I think that Tacoma Planning Commission is meeting Wednesday of this week. And Bill Adamson, our program director from SSMCP, as well as Courtney Brunel from our planning department, are both going to attend and talk in favor of this on behalf of the City of Lakewood. It would just be nice if that could be synced up as one corridor and have it line up with both the FAA and the DOD. Also, the city of Tacoma is, we thought initially, extending their tied-flat development regulations that they had put in place about six months ago. Long story short, we just learned that there is a proposed amendment that would impose a conditional use process on the expansion of defense-related operations and businesses in the tied-flat area, which is specific to, as it relates to fuel and things along those lines. So both SSMCP and the city have both written letters to the Tacoma City Council opposing that. And so I just wanted to make the mayor and the council aware of that. That did kind of come out of left field late last week. We had been monitoring it. But I just wanted to make the council, or at least we were just made aware of it late last week. So I just wanted to make the mayor and the council aware of that. I would like to commend our senior policy analyst, Shannon Kelly Fong, for the coordination with Waste Connections on the cleanup on Saturday and Sunday, and as well as a number of city volunteers who are out there. And of course, Waste Connections or LeMay and their team of folks who are out there, you know, they were literally doing all the heavy lifting in terms of unloading people's debris and garbage and things along those lines. Lot of happy faces, a lot of thank yous, a number of people coming through on multiple occasions. Also, several people coming through and saying, "Hey, I stopped on the side of the road and I picked up that mattress and that chair, and this, that, and the other thing." That is not, yep, absolutely. Likewise, our work crew was out there on Saturday, and they must have come through on eight or nine times. And so it was good, it was good to see. We did have a bit of a snafu late on Sunday. You know, it's supposed to be, go through until noon. They kind of closed the gates at about five minutes of. And so there was a couple of people that weren't able to get in the queue. So Shannon's in the process of following up with LeMay and kind of do what we did on Saturday, which is we kind of left it open for an extra five or 10 minutes to make sure any latecomers came through. But overall, it was a good success. We hope to get a final tally of tonnage and, you know, a number of mattresses and tires and things along those lines later this week or early next week. And once we have that, we'll share that with you. We finished our audit for 2017, and I'm pleased to report on both the financial and accountability audit, clean across the board. No findings, no management letter. I think there was only one exit item. And I just want to commend Ms. Kraus and her team, as well as all of our department directors and leadership and all of our staff, who, again, another indication of being good stewards of our citizens' taxes and fees. On Veterans Day, I want to thank our city clerk, Brianna Schumacher, as well as LJ Rohr from Councilmember Doug Richardson's office in pulling together, kind of at a last minute, our Veterans Day event ceremony on Sunday from 3:00 to 4:00. This will be an event to commemorate and recognize the armistice from 100 years ago. This is the third of a trifecta, if you will, that was initiated by Representative Dick Murray a couple of years ago, 2016 being the year to recognize the Boulevard of Remembrance, last year to recognize the entrance of the United States of America, as well as Canada into, no, not Canada, but the United States into the Great War. And then, of course, this year, the armistice. So we do have a nice agenda lined up. Mr. Heck will be here, keynote speaker. We have our three state legislators from 28th District. In addition, we have the great historian Bill Barsman, former mayor of Tacoma, who is going to be emceeing the event, and our very own mayor, who will be providing opening remarks. And we also have some, the choir and the color guard and things along those lines. So 3:00 to 4:00 on Sunday, and hopefully, we look forward to seeing you all. We are going to have to do kind of a full media blitz on this to get the word out since it came together at the last moment. But just given it's 100 years, we didn't want to not do it. So we thought it was important for Lakewood and our community to do that. And then, Mayor, we would ask that you, in your remarks, talk about the work that Mr. Sli is doing with, I think we're short, about 168 commemorative bricks. If maybe you can talk about that, encourage people to...
We're a couple bricks short of blood.
We will. We will. So, but I know that he's got some passion there, and he's almost there. He's almost there. So we want to try and help him, put him over the top there, put him over the top. As we, also, just a friendly reminder that your study session next Monday will be at the police station in the multipurpose room. The reason being is because it's a joint meeting with your youth council that you have once a year, and there's 22 of them, as I understand. And so you all won't fit right there. So you'll be over at the police station. So just a friendly reminder. And I think since we'll have the youth council, I think we might have snacks, is that? I think we're going to have snacks. So that's for the deputy mayor there.
Healthy snacks, because we do have students.
There's just snacks. There's no such thing as healthy snacks. There's just snacks.
Fight a good example.
Roger that. And then, as you look out into your calendar, a couple of events I think you'd be interested in. The first is on November 29, the police department will once again be doing their food drive and their blood drive. And then on December 5, and we're going to put these in your calendars. And then on December 5, we're going to have our year-end employee recognition event. And again, this year, that'll be over at the Clover Park Technical College Rotundo.
So is the blood drive do-it-yourself?
No, you have to sign up.
No, I mean, we have our own police doing it.
Actually, I don't. Yes, for you, Mayor, it is, yes. Actually, I think they're going to have the folks from the blood drive. I don't know, maybe a couple of officers will jump in if you really want them to. If you really want them to. So, but actually, in all seriousness, if you do want to give blood, and we'll send you the note, you do need to sign, you do need to sign up. You'll get a cookie and orange juice, if you do.
Apple juice. I can never give blood, I have Max now, apparently, because I lived in Europe during X period to Y period.
That's my report, Mayor.
Okay. Well, I might do the blood drive, I might clarify again. You know, it's, when's the last time you've been to Africa or something? Any, anything further questions for Mr. Caulfield? And we'll go to council comments. Mr. Randstadter.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, I certainly greatly appreciated the beginning of our meeting today and the recognition of... of veterans and also the recognition of Native Americans that took place. I think both are very important, and both were actually moving in each in their own way. And I'm glad that we've continued the tradition of holding a special meeting that is, extends beyond simply issuing a proclamation for veterans. In that regard, I guess that I would just want to bring the rest of the council's attention to the fact that the Washington State Department of Veterans Affairs and the governor's office are, have an award for the, annually for outstanding service to veterans that is awarded. And one of the awardees this year is Mr. McKenty. Mr. McKenty is the, I guess, the chief executive officer, or whatever his title is, but he's the moving force behind the American Lake Veterans Golf Course. And I think that it might be, I think this award is going to be presented to him on Veterans Day in a ceremony in Auburn, but we may want to officially take note of his receiving that award and communicate our appreciation and the fact that he's a Lakewood resident and that his service to veterans occurs here in our community. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
It would be appropriate to have him in, figure out, to recognize him in a meeting. And I also know he's a past president of the Purple Heart Association, National, past, I guess, National Commander of the Military Order of the Purple Heart. Mr. Bulkey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I really don't have much to say. I just am, I appreciate the city manager's correspondence with the Department of Social and Health Services, and I'm actually looking at the history of one of the individuals. So we just need to continue this fight and it's a continued breakdown of order in the Department of Social and Health Services. We're just going to have to figure something out, so I appreciate the work.
Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, to follow up on council member Branstadter's comments about the appropriateness of tonight's ceremony, I'm reminded of a ceremony that he and I were at two Saturdays ago, in which 60 congressional gold medals were presented to three living survivors, and the other 57 to family members of World War II in the Filipino-American community. And I think when we talk about veterans, I just wanted to include them as well. As to council member Bulkey's remarks about city manager Caulfield's works with regard to DSHS, and in connection with that, I have made it clear that I think this council works very well together. I submitted to the Morning News Tribune this morning a 650-word, the upper limit, editorial about what Mr. Caulfield and Mr. Bulkey talked about. And I have asked the city manager to share that editorial with you, and according to Mr. Musterick, Matt Musterick, the editorial will run on either the 17th or 18th of November. So it is in their cycle to bring that out, because as, again, as, going back to what Paul just said here, this is going to stop. As the mayor said as I walked in tonight, or as we walked in together, I mentioned this to him, and he said, he hopes the page is smoke. I was like, they're on fire. Well, they came as close as I could without sounding shrill. Although I would, I do appreciate the comments and the remarks from all of you on the Facebook page, where I can be a whole hell of a lot more sarcastic. Thank you.
Ms. Barth.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Wayland.
I had a few things to say. I just wanted to thank everyone for the Veterans Day ceremony tonight. It is a sobering reminder, if we all, as we do, take pause to think about the sacrifice. I was reading a social media post this weekend in which I was reminded that it's not just our active-duty folks, but our citizen soldiers that are deployed in the National Guard. The mayor of North Ogden, Utah, a guy by the name of Major Brent Taylor, the father of seven children, was deployed while part of the National Guard Service for the state of Utah. He was killed in action in Afghanistan on Saturday, leaving behind seven young children. Thirty-nine-year-old, he was in a base in Kabul when an Afghan security force allegedly opened fire on foreign servicemen training Afghan soldiers. So our folks trying to help their folks, and obviously, it didn't work out very well. You know, I wonder if it wouldn't be an interesting tribute, or appropriate tribute, from a city like Lakewood, host a joint base with McCord, to send a letter of condolence to the city of North Ogden and the family of Brent Taylor.
Good idea.
Yeah. Council member McLeod, as you could tell tonight, was very pleased that they were part of a ceremony which recognized our Native Americans, and I think that it was fitting, and it certainly opened up yet another good, open door of opportunity for collaboration in the future with arts and cultural events, and certainly business opportunities between the Nisqually tribe and the city of Lakewood, so that was great. On the adult family home issue, just to report there, I echo the comments and sentiments, and thank council member Simpson for his fine words, both in the social media context and the proposed article to the TNT. I think that's fantastic. I received word today that a local Lakewood attorney has now received the case from the decedent's family with regard to the adult family home murder, and he has reached out and said if there's anything he can do to assist us in any way, he'd be more than happy. There may be opportunities there now that there's an open door for discovery in that civil action for us to receive and review potential discovery that might be of interest. With regard to economic development stuff, I went over to CVS, which is now open, opened over the weekend. I went in and bought, you know, a quart of milk and checked out the area. It looks quite good. They are looking forward to having a larger grand opening opportunity and bring more of the community in there. As I was driving out of CVS, I went around the backside to the QFC area, which looks like, you know, speaking of Afghanistan mess, it looks like a disaster zone, and there are a bunch of people camping out there, and it looks like they almost had, they had two or three tents and chairs, and I don't know where they got those, and a bunch of crap laying around. But the general transient activity there is creating problems for the neighborhood. So if we can put some attention to that with some drive-bys during the evening on occasion, I think it might lessen activity. On Thursday, I attended the Chamber of Commerce South Sound Summit and enjoyed hearing a little bit of speech-making by our own Bruce Danmeyer, as well as Denny Heck. And featured prominently was the video clip you saw tonight on the impact of JBLM. It was very well received in a large auditorium full of businesspeople from Tacoma Pierce County. I thought it was just a fantastic clip and really well done by the county, so thank you for doing that, whoever's working there at the county, putting all that great stuff together. Library vote. We hope, obviously, we passed a resolution in support of it. Let's hope it passes. You know, a question I asked the city manager, if that vote fails, and if the library elects not to further pursue a capital bond down the road, what happens to the funding of the $500,000 that's on our CED deal? Does that get pulled back in total? Very good.
Deputy Mayor, we have not entered into any agreements that requires us to pay any of those funds.
We haven't released anything.
We have not, and we would not, actually, we purposely have done that until after the, we have not brought anything forward to you until we know what the outcome of the tomorrow's election is. So more to follow on that. If it passes, probably in early December.
Very good, thank you. That's it.
So I was reminded of a pretty poignant memory tonight was I enjoyed the recognition of Veterans Day and the microism of celebration of Native American culture 17 years ago. I took one of my then-young teen daughters to a college bowl game in California, or in Arizona, for this Fiesta Bowl, and we went out enjoying the festivities, and quite by happenstance, found ourselves surrounded by the grand marshals of the parade, who ended up sitting by us the next day at the game. They were the surviving Navajo code tarkers in their Marine Corps jackets. And I just remember telling my daughters, look around. You heard it in the middle of history. The Parks Recreation Advisory Board met on Tuesday, attended that. They are, got a lot going on. We've got a lot of moving pieces in the park, and they're enthused. On Thursday, I attended a town hall with Dr. Mark Esper, the Secretary of the Army, and it was well-received by the troops and quite informative. On Friday, I attended the hearing of our latest DSHS hearing in Judge Nevin's court, was a motion for preliminary injunction, which would have prohibited us from disclosing full police reports of criminal incidents inside a Western State Hospital. The case is far from over, but the preliminary injunction was denied. Judge Nevin did give findings, although if they appeal, it's all de novo, or his findings aren't binding on the appellate court. But he did find that the lopsided, imposed terms of the DSHS contract for policing out of Western State Hospital, which indicate that we have to have, give them extra notice and extra opportunity to quash any records request, or contrary to the Open Public Records Act, and are invalid. So they, I believe that Senator O'Bannon, one of a number of initiatives he intends to take in the next legislative session with respect to DSHS and Western State Hospital, is going to try to proviso around Western State Hospital in drafting unreasonable conditions on that contract.
Is there anything else to come before council? Then we will recess into executive session for approximately 20 minutes pursuant to RCW 4231101I to discuss with legal counsel representing the city litigation to which the city is a party when public knowledge regarding the discussion is likely to result in an adverse legal or financial consequence to the city. We're not expected to take any final action following the executive session, coming back only to adjourn the meeting. We are in recess for 20 minutes.
Can we take like two minutes before we hit 20, so I can get rid of the coffee and the water?
Go get it, go. Pee like racehorses.
Yeah, I will.
Okay.